Ladies and gentlemen, I call the City Council Committee of the whole meeting for June 6, 2018 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And tonight, we're happy to have a Boy Scout that will help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Gripp has been kind enough to help and ask him to do that. So, thank you. So, if everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
Thank you, young man. Will the city clerk, Jackie, please call the roll for tonight?
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Matson?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Clule?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. As we begin this meeting of the City Council, I again like to welcome all those attendants and those who are viewing the meeting on the television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens, for the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home. We thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you please turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic devices as they may interfere with our audio system. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on one of our committee agendas, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the Public with Business section of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the respective council members, and speak to the council as a body and not as a single member. You're asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes during the committee meetings. I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Is there any city administration update this evening, Ms. Spiegel?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you. Very good. We have four public hearings this evening. We have three in the community development area, and Alderman Gripp will lead those. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, your honor. As you stated, we have three items on the community development public hearing agenda this evening. Just for clarification for the public, the public hearing, this is your time to speak to the council. This isn't a time that we will dialogue back and forth or ask questions of the staff. You will have an opportunity to do that soon thereafter in the community development portion of the meeting. So, let's get started with item one, which is a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated former public rights of way, those being parts of college, Lombard, Dennison, and a public alley abutting Genesis Campus. Genesis Health Systems is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. Item number two is a public hearing for an ordinance for case number REZ-18-04, being request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezone 33.11 acres, more or less, of property located east of Jersey Meadows subdivision and north of East 53rd, from A1 agricultural district to R2 low-density residential district. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern and state your name, address, or ward.
Good evening. My name's Adam Seitz. I'm with Advance Homes at 4215 E 60th Street in Davenport. We are the petitioners on behalf of Pheasant Creek LLC. We're before you today requesting your approval of R2 zoning and a continuation of a PDD zoning classification that currently exists on a portion of the parcel that we recently acquired. Along with our application for rezoning, we turned in a conceptual site plan. The site plan we submitted reflects the best laid-out subdivision based upon the physical limitations accompanying the land. Based upon multiple meetings with city staff, engineering review, traffic studies, and all the department heads, the residential design is the best use of this property as it conforms with the comprehensive land use map. The concerns that the neighbors have brought up regarding traffic and traffic patterns have been considered by various levels of oversight within the City of Davenport staff, and our rezoning has been recommended for approval at each step of our application. Our conceptual design connects to the Jersey Meadows subdivision onto stubbed-out roads that previous council members had approved to be access points for our 33.11-acre residential site. The argument there are not enough access points based upon number of houses have been reviewed. There is no code or statute that mandates a number of homes per access point in the city. The neighbors' concerns with the access to their subdivision was a complaint from previous council members that approved the Jersey Meadows subdivision. It is not valid with our proposed site plan. We want to reiterate that we are not asking for a high-density zoning such as R4. We simply want to utilize the same R2 zoning that currently exists in the Jersey Meadows subdivision by extending the previously designed street pattern. We strongly support the city staff's recommendation that no connection be made from our proposed residential subdivision by way of Elmore Avenue. Not only are there physical and financial limitations that make this connection impossible, a connection to Elmore does a disservice for our proposed site along with the Jersey Meadows subdivision. A connection between Jersey Ridge and Elmore will create a direct thoroughfare within the residential subdivisions between Jersey Ridge and Elmore. This connection allows motorists to bypass 53rd Street. As professional home builders and developers in the community, we know that any access between our residential development and a commercial development on Elmore would be a strong deterrent to residents wanting to purchase homes within our new subdivision. It's not a common practice in city planning to have a residential neighborhood directly connected to a major commercial thoroughfare like Elmore. Based on our congruency with the land use map and the recommendations from city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we feel we're well within the city guidelines to rezon this parcel to R2 and continue the PDD zoning that currently exists. The counterarguments from the surrounding neighbors seem to be purely based upon emotion, not on fact. We ask that the City Council support our request for R2 zoning as submitted. It allows us to build a new subdivision within the City of Davenport that would facilitate needed growth, increase the tax base, and create additional school enrollments for the new residents. We thank you for your time and consideration on the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern and state your name, ward, or address.
Hi, I'm Jed Ferdinand, and I'm a neighbor, and I rise in opposition to this. One of the things I did for almost 30 years was I worked at the Quad Cities Nuclear Station. And one of the things I did during that time was I was involved in assessments. And one of the things you do in assessments is you benchmark. Go out to see how other people do things. So, what I did was benchmark similar projects, like the developers are proposing. How I did this was I went on Google Maps, and I looked up Costco's, probably under 400-mile radius, looked at them for buildings, neighborhoods, houses, apartments, things like that. It took till about the 25th one somewhere in Wisconsin. And of those, of the other 24, no Costco had a residential development directly next to it. All of them had a development that was separated by a major thorough-- if they had a Costco, the residences, residential areas were separated by a major thoroughfare. So, we're doing something out of normal by putting this residence, residential development directly behind the Costco. So, that's one thing. The other thing is, the developer just said that they, you have no ordinance for density, housing density in a particular area. So, that doesn't mean you shouldn't have one. So, I think the council should look at that and see if, in the future, or even before that, that you should kind of look at how much density is in the area. They also said that having a street that connected Elmore to the development was a bad idea. I can tell you there are several solutions to that. There are ways to calm traffic that will eliminate people just using it as a thoroughfare. You can have a raised crosswalk. You can design the streets so that they are a wavy pattern, so that you can slow down traffic. So, the idea that people will just use that as a thoroughfare can be overcome by some simple design criteria. And I think so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward.
Hi, my name's Brian Carver. I live at 2730 East 58th Street, on two houses away from the cornfield and the new housing addition. Also can see Costco being built from my front door, but that's not what this is about. This is about the through street. In many previous meetings that we've had with the zoning committee, there's been a request and a desire by some of our neighbors to create a through street to 58th. I have concerns about that with, I have four children, one's out of the house, but I have three other children. I know within our neighborhood, we're currently rotating through. Some of the older people are moving out. We have some younger kids moving in. I know on our short-street portion alone, there's four kids that are under the age of four now, and so that there's kids going to be growing up in this neighborhood, hopefully. So, my concern, truthfully, is strictly with the thoroughfare through to Elmore Avenue or Elmore Circle for East 58th Street. I do have, I'll try to keep this short, I do have a petition signed that I'd like to submit, and I don't know how to do this, but, okay, I'll be ready in just a second. So, it has 20 of the 27 people that live on East 58th Street, who basically, I have two tenants on the petition. The first is to say, we want single-family homes, because I've heard rumors that R2 can mean something other than that. So, that's my one point. And my second is that they're confirming what the builder has asked, and Matt Flynn has put forward in his recommendation that there's no through street connecting East 58th Street and Elmore Circle. So, there's 27 people on the list. I couldn't contact six. I couldn't get a hold of them. 20 people signed, and one didn't. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern and state your name, address, or ward.
I'm Tom K. I live in Jersey Meadows. I live in between 59th and 58th Street on Meadows Place. There's a stub right beside my house. There are seven turns from Jersey Ridge, whether you come in on, what is that, you come off 50, or Jersey Ridge, and you end up on 58th Street. If you were to go back to my stub, which is Meadows Place, you would have to turn off of Jersey Ridge, onto 58th, onto Lorton, onto 59th, go up to the end, and if you wanted to use my stub, make two more turns. That's ridiculous, to have people winding back and forth through areas of the neighborhood that they don't even need to be in. So, I don't think Jersey Meadows addition was planned to be a thoroughfare to another addition behind us. If it had been, they would have had straight-through streets like they do in most neighborhoods. So, it's pretty complex, whether it's 58th or 59th, you still have several turns. It's not a straight shot. And I don't know how Costco got where they are. I have opinions about that. I'll keep them to myself. It's a little late. But, I don't know. The construction that's going to be going on back there, how are they getting the heavy equipment back there? How are they getting the cement trucks back there? How are they getting supply trucks back there with wood and all the things necessary to support building, what, 64 houses? Is that what I understand? So, if nothing else, I came up here to scratch my head in front of you about what's going on and how these things all developed. I don't get it. And to say that people would come off of Elmore and then into this complex neighborhood of all kinds of turns, I wouldn't do that personally. I might do it once, but once I figured out how complicated it was to get through, I would probably just take Elmore to 53rd and be on my way. So, I'm not saying people in front of me don't have common sense, but I am asking that we all think real hard about this, because once it's done, we may have kind of a mess. So, I don't think Elmore is going to cause that big a problem to at least have one entrance over there. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward, please.
Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is Joel Moore. I live in the 6th Ward. I live at 2723 Julie Lane Court in Davenport, Iowa. Honorable mayor and city council members, I'm here today representing the majority of my neighbors who live in the Jersey Meadows addition that will be negatively impacted by the proposed rezoning case known as Pheasant Creek Edition, or REZ-1804. And this information is in your handout that Jackie has given to each and every one of you, so you can read it afterwards. First, I'd like to share with you some information on our neighborhood. Jersey Meadows is a 152-home subdivision located just north of 53rd Street and just east of Jersey Ridge Road. This neighborhood consists of mostly single-family homes with some condos. The neighborhood's economic impact to the City of Davenport is estimated to be greater than $1 million per year in property tax revenue. This estimate is based on the average annual property tax of $6,600 per dwelling. I know myself and many of my neighbors pay a lot more in property tax than that figure, but I was very conservative on how much property tax revenue we generate for the City of Davenport every year. We have a wonderful family neighborhood full of active and caring people. We've also applied to the City of Davenport to be an accepted, as a recognized neighborhood. Recently, Jersey Meadow neighbors became aware of this rezoning request by Advance Homes to reclassify the adjoining property from A1 to R2. Because of the limited notification that most of us received in the neighborhood, we were kind of late to address this issue. On May 15th, the Planning and Zoning Commission passed the rezoning request with a 3 to 2 vote, so barely passed that. Two of the commissioners had to abstain from the discussion and vote because they live in our neighborhood. And another member who lives in the neighborhood was absent from that vote. We understand that's the way it has to work, but we'd like to see you seek their opinion on things. One point we'd like to make clear, the majority of Jersey Meadow residents support the proposed single-family housing development being proposed by Advance Homes. I've known the Seitz families for years. They're outstanding, they're an outstanding family and a well-respected building contractor in the area. So, it's nothing personal. Where we disagree is the current plan does not provide an access to Elmore Avenue, which we feel is important and needed. A petition requesting this access was given to the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 15th. An updated copy of the petition has been presented to the City Council in that handout. We have 66, approximately 66 individuals who signed that petition, asking for another access to Elmore Avenue. Our reasons for proposing this direct access to Elmore Avenue are as follows. Large, heavy construction equipment and supply vehicles will be using our existing neighborhood streets that are not designed for this traffic load and weight. We estimate construction will take three to five years to complete. The construction equipment and vehicles will have limited access to the construction site from Jersey Ridge Road. Presently, our neighborhood has two entrance sites, Jersey Meadows Drive and Lorton Avenue. And at times, they can present a challenge turning south on Jersey Ridge Road during high-traffic periods of the day. When Veterans Memorial Parkway and Costco are completed, this will only compound the Neighborhood safety issues and damage to existing streets are likely to occur. We already have some damage at the entrance on Lorton Avenue, or, excuse me, Jersey Meadows Drive. We have estimated the Pheasant Creek Housing addition will increase neighborhood traffic dramatically. The national average for vehicles per home is 2.3, and I received that information from Google. This equates to 147 additional vehicles traveling the streets on a routine basis. Adding Jersey Meadows existing homes and using the same formula, we have 350 vehicles. So, when you add those two together, more than 500 vehicles will be traveling our neighborhood on a daily basis. That's a 42% increase. And Elmore Avenue access is needed to expedite this large increase in normal and emergency traffic. People always gravitate to the quickest and easiest routes of travel. It's human nature. With Elmore Avenue and Veterans Memorial Parkway designed as thoroughfares with posted speed limits of 35 to 45 miles an hour, drivers will want immediate access to those streets. Presently, Jersey Meadows has good to excellent streets. With heavy construction equipment, it's likely damage will occur and may not surface for years. Long after the contractors are gone, the city then has to bear that responsibility and the cost of repair. Jersey Meadow residents are asking the City Council to amend the rezoning request to require Pheasant Creek Edition to have direct access to Elmore Avenue for the aforementioned reasons. We thank you for your review and consideration. I now would like to ask the Jersey Meadow residents in the audience who support and access to Elmore Avenue to please stand.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern and state your name, address, or ward.
Mike Cotola, 2723 58th. I'm not sure what Brian spoke, because I just walked in. So, my biggest concern is with the guy that just spoke is safety. Yeah, you'll have an increase of traffic with just the loop, but if you have the throughway, like he said, people take the path of least resistance, like electricity. You'll have, what is it, Crystal Ridge Apartments, 126 people, Park Place, 192 apartments, plus all of East 58th, there's over 250 houses. All that will take the path of least resistance, right through the throughway on East 58th from Jersey Ridge to Elmore. So, I don't think anybody other than our street has any skin in the game. We have all the skin. We have all the game on our street. Our neighborhood is turning over. I have a new neighbor, no kids, planning on having kids. Brian has a new neighbor, no kids, planning on having kids. Our neighborhood is going to turn over and have younger kids. On that street, with the traffic of just the new houses, plus the throughway, just too many. It will be a safety issue. So, I wish you'd take in consideration the apartments and that traffic, because they're not going to want to go 53rd or the Veterans Parkway. They're going to take the path of least resistance with less traffic right through our neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern and state your name, address, or ward.
Thank you, council members. My name is Renee Skillet, and I live at 2764 Julie Lane Court. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and to the member residents here from Jersey Meadows. My concerns, as I've outlined in the information my husband and I submitted, really are twofold. And to address both sides that have been presented about a thoroughfare from Elmore all the way through to Jersey Ridge Road, my proposition to the committee would be other than. There are several residential districts within Davenport that have closed roads. My proposition is the two entrances that are being proposed from Jersey Meadows into Pheasant Creek be closed. They are currently closed off to the field. My proposal is that they would continue to be closed off to Pheasant Creek. That eliminates any concerns from the residents of a thoroughfare from Elmore to Jersey Ridge Road. My second request to the committee would be that you, if you have the time, and I realize we all have jobs outside of this committee, but if you could, before the next committee meeting, drive into Jersey Meadows. I would respectfully request that you drive the streets, the turns that have been mentioned, and the residents that have been mentioned. I walk my dogs. I ride my bicycle. I run through the neighborhood, and my husband and I have lived there for 14 years. We enjoy being in a neighborhood that is established. We enjoy seeing our neighbors. And the concerns that we have of the development side and then later the additional traffic, we're focusing on what happens after. I'm looking at today, tomorrow, and three and five years out. So, I respectfully request that you consider existing construction, what it's like for a neighborhood that's going through additions or phases. When I moved there, I knew there would be construction, but that has ended for several years. And I would ask that you consider that when you're looking at the proposition of Elmore Avenue access. I don't want it to go into Jersey Meadows. I would like it to be cut off. So, I would just ask that you consider that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern and state your name, address, or ward, please.
Hi, my name's Renee McGee. I live at 2708 East 59th Street in Jersey Meadows. First, I'd like to thank you for hearing us today. Most of our residents there, I think, would all be thrilled if it was a closed-off and it was a division, a subdivision that only entered and exited to Elmore. If that's not going to happen, what I don't understand is, we do all want to grow, but let's grow to thrive and not make it a rapid choice. The site plan that has been presented to us so far only shows that we will further landlock ourselves to two entrances. Five years down the road, if Mr. Flynn and the council are incorrect, we will not be able to fix it. My request is that advanced builders at least allocate land for future growth if we find that we need that access road to Elmore Avenue. Excuse me, I'm nervous. If we need that access road to Elmore Avenue, they've got to at least have a site plan that allocates the land be there. It's not. One other thing, just to respond to the apartments coming through, to leave those apartments and come on to East 58th, you either have to cut across four lanes of traffic to get into Jersey Meadows to make that cut through, or you will have to make a very to get into Jersey Meadows to make that cut-through, or you will have to make a very hard left. If you come to visit us, and you sit out there and you see what Jersey Ridge is like at certain times of the day, you are not going to choose to try to turn left against the traffic. The other thing to consider is, I know the construction in Jersey Ridge right now is to kind of discourage traffic from Fifty-third all the way back to Veterans by going from four to two to three to two. Five years from now, if we don't have a third or a separate entrance, we are only asking for more traffic and more problems at the intersection of Fifty-third and Jersey Ridge or down the road.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name's Karen Carlson, and I live at twenty-seven ten Julie Lane Court in Jersey Meadows. I guess what, one thought is, is that nobody's really mentioned, is, well, what I'm saying, what I want to say is that if you did close that, don't make it a thoroughfare, that would be a perfect solution. Our side would be safe, the other side would be safe. But the way that I get over, I go over to Walmart, I go over to Elmore, I go up to the road that is where the casino is. It is a hop, skip, and a jump. It's a straight-through. There is no stoplights. It's fantastic way to get over there, and it takes you two minutes. It might be a mile longer, but it is so fast. And when they get Veterans Parkway open, that's going to be a beautiful road. We're spending all that money to get that road. That's where people are going to go. It is, you don't want to go through a neighborhood and have to deal with all that when you've got this straight-through road. It is not an inconvenience. I use those, I use that road all the time. And when Veterans Parkway was even, before it was even being developed, I used it all the time, even with all the potholes in it. It was just a great way to get to the other side. I just can't imagine that people are going to want to go through a residential area just to get to the other side. Besides, when you get to the other side, you've still got to get on a main throughway. So it's really not, you know, solving a problem. You know, people will see that, even if they try it, you're still going to have to get on a main throughway to get to one point to another. And like I said, just personally, I use the other roads. They're fantastic, they're easy, and they're quick. I guess that's my point. And I've made another point before also, is just the safety factor of, they said that there has been some studies made about, you know, police, fire, ambulance, and they say this is fine. But, you know, if you only have one access, you know, you've got the fire station right here, the fire station's going to have to come all the way around to get into there. It's a lot quicker just this way and zip in there. But anyway, I understand that it's probably all about money and maybe losing a couple of housing, houses there that you would have to make an access. But please, 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 I know there's a clause in there that says, never have access to Elmore. Don't ever do anything that says never, because that just, that just ties you into, never is a very long time. And I know that is in their proposal, is to never have access to Elmore. And to me, that's just not looking forward, that you have to have vision. You may need access someday. Just don't put that in there. Leave it open that you can have that access to Elmore. You know, you always have to have vision, you know, five, ten years down the road. So that's all I'm asking. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? State your name, address, or ward, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike DeJulius. I'm at fifty-eight oh eight Lorton Avenue, just off of Fifty-Eighth Street. I wanted to voice my opinion on this. It is, after all, just my opinion, and you guys have a tough decision to make with a very split neighborhood. One, I've taken notes here, everyone that has spoken opposition to this lives, or most, I won't speak in terms of all or nothing. Most of the people that have spoken in opposition to this live on Fifty-Ninth Street or Julie Lane Court. Most of the people that would be impacted by this street going through to Elmore Avenue are on Fifty-Eighth Street. If we have twenty out of the twenty-one people that were contacted for this, opposed to this, I believe their opinion should sway more than Fifty-Ninth Street, who is not going to get the traffic that Fifty-Eighth Street would be. I also don't want to speak to majorities, because as they said, they had a petition signed from sixty-six people. That is not a majority of a one-hundred-and-fifty-person subdivision. I will be doing the contractor work on this position, on this subdivision. I have done many subdivisions with advanced homes in the past. We have worked together between my father, Adam's grandfather, my grandfather, we have worked together for almost sixty years. I have a say in the way traffic comes. I have the way, I have the direct employees to tell them to slow down through the neighborhood and watch which way they are going. I also want to confirm that a thoroughfare is, somebody spoke earlier, to seven turns through the neighborhood. If Fifty-Eighth Street were to go through from Jersey Ridge to Elmore would be two turns, onto Jersey Meadows Place and right on Fifty-Eighth Street. As far as traffic patterns, I myself live there, my kid plays baseball at Southeast Little League. I turn right on Jersey Ridge, I turn left on Fifty-Eighth Street, I go right through a neighborhood from one thoroughfare to the other. I believe people that go to the library that live in Jersey Meadows Place are probably not going to go a mile north to Veterans Memorial and back down, or south to Fifty-third and try to get down at five o'clock at night. I believe this would be used as a major thoroughfare from people that are coming from Eastern Avenue Farms, Jersey Point, and Jersey Meadows to get out to Elmore. So in that, I am opposed to this connecting through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? State your name, address, or ward, please.
My, my name's Gary Heson, and I live in the Jersey Meadows. I'd like to make sure we don't get caught up on the term thoroughfare, because that's not what is in our minds about what's going to happen or what we hope to happen. We hope to have a connecting street from Elmore into the new subdivision, period. Now whether that continues into Jersey Meadows currently on the Fifty-Eighth Street or Fifty-Ninth Street remains to be seen, okay? But if you look at the way the land is, you don't have to have the street coming from Elmore straight into the new housing, straight on the Fifty-eighth, and shoot out to fifty on the Jersey Ridge Road. That's not the idea. You can make that a bidirectional, curvy, somebody mentioned before, road. So to, to, I don't want people to get locked into the term thoroughfare, because once you start hearing that term, it gets set in your mind, and that's all you think about. That's not what we envision happening. And we understand where the people in the Fifty-Eighth Street are concerned. We do thoroughly do that, and we don't want to pit Fifty-Eighth Street people from all the rest of the neighbors. That's not what we want to happen at all. We have one big Jersey Meadows neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. Okay? Excuse me. The second thing, I want to follow up on what the lady before me talked about, and that is, that there was a condition put in the Plan and Zoning Commission report to you that says, no street connection from the proposed Pheasant Creek subdivision east to Elmore shall be made. Well, I attended all the commission meetings, and this was discussed back and forth, but I don't recall the commission ever putting this in their notes, this statement. Now I know Mr. Flynn has mentioned it several times, and he's frankly probably heard enough from us about this issue, and so I think, in a moment that maybe he should regret, he made a blanket statement that this should not happen. Now I do not believe that is a fair representation of what the Plan and Zoning Commission was all about. I do not recall any discussion among any other people in that commission about this kind of a condition, except for Mr. Flynn making it. And maybe some other time where some people can research the background as to how this got put in the condition in this document. Okay? Now since I'm on a roll, I have a document, I didn't bring it up here, but it refers back to the Costco development. And there, the Plan and Zoning Commission did have conditions. And one of the conditions that was in the document from the zoning commission was to potentially, possibly have a tertiary access to Costco from Elmore Avenue. And it goes on, and it was quite detailed. And Bob Berger, by the way, mentioned it in his latest article that was quoted in the paper. And he mentioned it last year also. And it was, he was also quoted in the article a couple weeks ago in the paper about the Costco project being, progressing. I understand that that condition was omitted last year when it came down to being presented to the council. That somehow, that condition disappeared. Now, I don't have all the facts maybe, but I do call into question the integrity of what's going on here, when sometimes conditions are removed and sometimes conditions are added without everybody being aware of it. I rush my case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'm...
Once again, I'm Adam Seitz, the petitioner. I just want to talk real briefly about the connection off of Elmore through the PDD section, which we're going to talk about next. The topography of where the connection would have to be made is truly impossible, you know, without, you know, extensive bridging, culverts, things like that. There's a fifty-five-foot rise in a very, very short amount of time in a gorge across a named creek that would have to be made. So that's what's making this so impossible to do. You know, the, understanding the concern of the neighbors wanting that connection, but it truly is, you know, a tall task to accomplish with the topography that's there. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? We're not going to get into back and forths, so...
No, I'll just make one statement.
One comment.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what...
Please speak to us, sir.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The topography involved here, he talked about crossing a creek. If anybody were to go and look at the actual land that's involved here, there's a ravine, yes. But from what a normal, reasonable person would look at, he would see that the best approach off of Elmore Avenue would be pretty much across from where Burger King is right now, maybe a little bit south. There's a ravine there. If you saw all the dirt, if you have seen all the dirt that's being moved by Costco, I see it every day, all the dust besides, if they were to take that and put that in the ravine, hell, the problem'd be solved already.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number three is a public hearing for an ordinance for case number REZ eighteen dash zero five, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezon seven-point-four-one acres more or less of property located west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek from A-one Agricultural District to PDD Planned Development District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward, please.
Thank you again, council members. Renee Skillet, twenty-seven sixty-four Julie Lane Court. My opposition solely rests in, if the rezoning for PDD does not allow access from Elmore Avenue as the request stands, I would ask that the committee members consider that prior to approving it as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This public hearing has been closed, and that concludes the public hearings for community development. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. So we have one more public hearing, and that's in the Public Works area. And Alderman Ambrose, if you'd lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open a public hearing on the ordinance for case number REZ eighteen dash zero...
No, no, Public Works.
Oh. Public hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs for the West Six and Old Area Sidewalk Program. Anybody from the public wishing to address that? Hearing and seeing no one, Your Honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sure. Okay. So we have one appointment tonight. We have an appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Patricia Zamora is a new appointment. Can I, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Patricia Zamora, great community leader. We thank you for your service. Now we're in petitions and communications, and before I go to that, I just want everybody to know, I'm not the mayor. Mayor Klipsch is away on city business. Actually, he's at the War College getting briefed on national security-type things. So that's a wonderful thing. So I'm just happy to fill in for him. So next section is petitions and communications from council members and the mayor. Alderman Dickman, would you like to start, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. As some of you know, I've been working with a nonprofit to show a film coming up this June twenty-third that's about toxic stereotypes and trying to work with our young people to redefine themselves. Got some good news on that front. There has been two-hundred-and-fifty tickets to the River Bandits game, the Monday after the event donated to the first two-hundred-and-fifty registrants. And that will also come with free wristbands for the young people who sign up for that. So if you know anyone who likes baseball or free rides, definitely encourage them to come check out the event on June twenty-third, starting at five p.m. And then also, just a quick reminder that on June fourteenth at six p.m., my ward meeting will be featuring Lori Elem about mental health services in the county, and that will be at Fairmont Library, six p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderwoman McGuinness, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to give everybody a heads-up that the third ward meeting is coming up this Sunday, June tenth at two p.m., and that's at the Antoine Leclerc House at six-thirty East Seventh Street. And I hope you can join me again. That's Sunday, June tenth at two p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I want to thank Alderman Dickman. She's done a great job in putting the community needs together, and I appreciate it. Second is, you know, the dock has been torn down on a riverfront, and our riverfront looks incredible. I want to thank our Parks Department, our Public Works Department. You know, most people alive today have never seen the riverfront in Davenport the way it is now, and I would encourage everybody that has the opportunity to go down and look at the beautiful grassy area where the dock used to be, all the way down to the stadium. It's really breathtaking. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, now we're going to move into our action items for discussion. So you saw some folks, we had some public hearings on areas, now they'll come to the committee folks. Again, the respective Alderman will lead those discussions, and this will give an opportunity if council members want to engage in that discussion also. So the first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion with Alderman Clule helping. Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a full agenda for community development this evening with nine items on the agenda. So we will start from the top with item number one, which is a second consideration ordinance for case number ORD eighteen dash zero one, amending title seventeen-point-four-one of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning, Highway Corridor Overlay District and Elmore Corners Overlay District by Creating an Elmore Corners Overlay District and Design Standards." Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name. Step to the lectern, state your name, address, or ward, please.
My name is Candy Pasternak. I'm an attorney with Pasternak Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the developer, THF. I've had the opportunity to speak with you folks before. I recognize that this is the second consideration, the same concerns and points that we've made in the past. We would simply ask the council to refer to those same comments. Again, we would reiterate that we have complied with the PDD district that has been imposed on us since 2001 at this property. We've met all the requirements, the design requirements that existed at the time we became the developers. We've invested over $43 million in that development and complying with those requirements. And we simply ask that the council support the P&amp;Z recommendation that the Elmore Corners overlay district be approved with the, without the THF parcel being included. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you, your honor. I just have a question for staff. I'm not sure who wants to take this one. Take one for the team here. Question, question is in regards to, we talked about this previously, and I'm just curious. We, the previous conversation included that a lot of these current requests or current requirements would be waived. So it's not necessarily because there's a, because of the previous requirements that we recognize that in regard to like parking lot numbers, those kinds of things. Some things we just certainly can't expect those to be updated. Is that correct? And I just wanted to see if there's been some conversation so that we're hopefully all under the same understanding that we recognize that and that it's not set in stone.
Bruce Berger, your Community Planning and Economic Development Director. The conditions, the design standards really that are proposed to be in place, as stated earlier, I think by the representative of THF, are more strict. The, the reality is though, when those come forward, they are individually reviewed by us. They do come forward to council. And so, yeah, we do have that ability available to say, look, in this case, because it's been previously developed, maybe this particular issue needs to be waived in that case. So we have that flexibility, plus the process does have a built-in design review board as well.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Mattson.
So again, I just want to clarify, in what the second consideration is the same as the first, where THF is not part, the area is not part of this request.
That's correct.
Roger, thank you.
Seeing no one else from the council, we will move on to item number two, which is a first consideration for case number REZ-18-04, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezon 33.11 acres more or less of property located east of Jersey Meadow subdivision and north of East 53rd Street from A1 Agricultural District to R2 low-density residential district. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? And let me just preface this. This is what we just discussed in the public hearing. You are more than welcome to come up and say what you have already said, but we have heard you. So preferably, you would come up with either new things that you thought of while you were listening to other, other folks. But you are certainly welcome to come and interact at this point. So, and you have a five-minute limit when we're in our, in the meeting, not, not the public hearing. So, having said that, does anybody wish to comment on this item from the public? Okay. Is there anyone from council who wishes to comment? We'll start with Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to first of all, of course, thank everyone who came down to speak and everyone who signed petitions. This is kind of an interesting issue because usually it's something, it's safety versus something else. And in this case, both opposition and the lack of opposition are both related to safety. As, you know, I've got young kids myself, so I certainly understand. Just want to make sure everyone who's here and everyone who's in the neighborhood knows that we are trying to figure out the best way possible to keep the integrity of the neighborhood and make it the safest environment possible. So even if the council rules in a way that you didn't think was the best, we are trying to do what is best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Clule.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reiterate what Alderwoman Dickman said basically and say thank you for your advocacy. This is, this is the way the process is supposed to work. It's a deliberative process where the public speaks, the developer speaks, the council listens, and an informed decision is the best decision. And this is, I just want to thank you for this information. And so many times, people feel that their input is not heard. And certainly, the silence from the council during the public hearing must make you feel like, well, hello. But in fact, that's the way the process works. It is a listening process. So I do, again, appreciate your coming forward this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Clule. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very interesting dynamics to this neighborhood, and I can't thank you enough for coming down and enlightening the city council about it. You know, the upside is, you know, we're, we got a great staff, and they'll be focusing on trying to find some type of compromise so we can keep everybody happy. So this is really the first part of our discussion. Thankfully, you all came down. It was, like I said, for me, very interesting. I've been through a lot of these processes, but the dynamics in the neighborhood is really, really interesting. But we got a great staff, and let's, give us an opportunity to work on some compromises. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. And just so everybody knows, there's three cycles here. So this is the very first talk, discussion. So we have tonight, where we really kind of just talk about it and look at it and listen to you guys. And then the next Wednesday, we'll vote on this. So that's, the vote's next Wednesday. This is the discussion one. Then we'll do this two more times. So you'll have next Wednesday, then second cycle, which is a Wednesday and Wednesday, then third cycle, Wednesday and Wednesday. So that gives staff, us, time to drive out, visit, talk, whatever, come up with new ideas so everybody understands. Please stay engaged with us. And then just more of a curiosity question for you, sir. Did, who, is the owner selling it and you're buying the property? Explain how that process is going, that, selling the agricultural land?
So the land we've already closed on, and we purchased it from the Schaefer family who owned the property for a very long time, that actually sold the property to Costco as well.
Okay. So you bought it?
Yep, we've already closed on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Anyone else from council? Seeing no one, I will wrap up. I've got a few questions. Bruce, if I could ask those questions of you, please. So just to be clear, this was in the comprehensive plan residential, plan to be residential?
Good question. Without pulling it up here, I'm not sure exactly, but we can get that answer.
Okay. Let's get that answer. You know, one thing, I attended the neighborhood meeting. Mr. Acheson has invited me to come and walk the farmland with him. We are going to set up a time. I've committed to do that. I've probably been in your neighborhood about a dozen times in the last few weeks, driving it and checking it out. It's something that I try to do whenever I know we're going to have a contested issue, is try to get a lay of the land as much as I can. One thing that was brought up at the neighborhood meeting was a house-to-access ratio. Bruce, I am going to ask you a question. Sorry. It took me a while to get there. So one thing that was brought up was a house-to-access ratio. That is something I've searched and searched for, and I cannot find any city that uses that as a measurement. How would we measure how many houses or vehicles could use a neighborhood street?
It's probably more of a Public Works question, but yeah, I'm not very familiar with that term, and again, our traffic engineer might be. But I know in general, they will look at, you know, an average number of people per housing unit, which, you know, is something we can look up. And then factor that into, you know, their traffic study and their traffic analysis. I do know, and I think maybe it's been brought up before too, there's a, the access point off on Jersey would be one that came up, I think, at some of the discussions that if traffic warrants, and I know our traffic engineer would say then at that point, a traffic signal may be warranted. Right now, it doesn't look like it would trigger that, but again, if situation changes, you know, that's something that our Public Works Department would always be able to take a look at.
Okay. And last one, and then I'll, I just have a couple of comments. The R2 zoning, there was a question from one of the folks, and let's just make sure we get that answered. What's allowable in a low-density R2 zoning? Because there was some question. We just want to be clear, it's not ambiguous. There are certain things that can go there, and let's just make sure that everybody is aware of exactly what those are.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. I did want to, I did want to mention about the, about the pass-throughs in 58th Street. I have a family member on 58th, the other side of Jersey Ridge, and that is a pass-through likely from your neighborhood, but also Jersey, Jersey Ridge and Eastern. And, you know, if, if there were a straight shot from Elmore to Jersey Ridge, I do believe it would be used as a pass-through. We do, we do have issues on 58th on that street. I've had to call and request that our police department set up the speed cameras there, and you'll find folks flying upwards of 60 miles an hour. So it's definitely a concern. When I was in that neighborhood last year on 58th Street, that was the biggest concern I heard on 58th was if the Costco thing is approved, we would at least like to make sure that that road does not go through. I know Mr. Acheson brought up, how did the, how did the road get removed in the dark of night? It wasn't the dark of night. We did, we did vote on it. It was in the newspaper. It was talked about in six different public meetings and voted on. And we took it out for a couple of reasons. The first was Costco did not want the road. They did not want to pay for the road. So if, if, because they were not going to use it, and that's a different issue. So if the developer of the land doesn't want the road and doesn't want to pay for the road, the city would pay for the road. And we had quite a few neighbors who said, we do not want this road coming through our neighborhood. And quite frankly, as a, as a good steward of your tax dollars, I don't want the city of Davenport paying for that road either. Because conservatively, if it's a million-dollar road, I think we've ballparked it at one and a half million dollars to get through. That neighborhood that, that goes back there in, in the life of the road, it's not, your property taxes aren't going to pay for that road, let alone all of the other services that you get. Anyways, those are my comments. As Alderman Mattson said, five more weeks, we will have discussion. I'm sure folks will be out into your neighborhood. We take these things seriously. We will try to make the best decision that we can. So, we will move on to item number three, which is a first consideration ordinance for case number REZ-18-05, request of Pheasant Creek Properties LLC to rezon 7.41 acres more or less of property located west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek from A1 Agricultural District to PDD Planned Development District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving case number ANX-18-03, the annexation of 8.69 acres more or less of territory located east of Hillendale Road, south of Sloper Town, Sloper Town Road. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Just as a note, this is, this is land up in the industrial complex related to the Heinz property. There's another property, and then also the Sterilite property through annexations in the state laws. There was a little sliver of land that wasn't brought into the city of Davenport. And now that some of those properties are being built out, we are now taking the action to bring that land into the city. Seeing no one else, we will go to item number five, which is a resolution for case number F-18-03, the final plat of Pheasant Ridge, first addition, on 43.27 acres more or less, located west of Elmore Avenue and north of East 53rd Street, containing three lots to facilitate the sale of property for development. Property is zoned R3 low-density dwelling district and PDD Planned Development District. And I'll ask for public comments, but I'll also preface with, I'm going to make a motion that we table this item so that it be voted on. And it's a resolution, so it only takes one cycle, two weeks. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this item and that it come back for the third reading so that it runs in conjunction with the rezoning development that we've already discussed. So we're voting on it all together. So having said that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment now? Anyone from the council? So I make a, make a motion to table item number five until the third reading of the corresponding rezoning related to items two and three on this agenda. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that resolution has been tabled. Item number six is a resolution approving case number F-17-08, being the final plat of Briar's Edition, being a replat of lots four, five, six, and seven of Block 1 of Parker's Edition, located west of Division Street and along the north side of Second Street, containing .83 acre more or less and two industrial lots. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of parcel F-0051-45, 643 East 6th Street to Olivia Aguilera, petitioner. 634 East 6th Street to Roger DeLu, petitioner. And 646 East 6th Street to Mary Rothan, petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of 422 Perry to Y&amp;J Properties LLC. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution in support of the Hilltop Campus Village continuing the Main Street program administered by the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose.
I see Scott's out there. Scott, for the public, can you briefly explain to the public what the program is and some highlights?
My name is Scott Tonnercliff. I'm the director of the Hilltop Campus Village, a Main Street Iowa program here in Davenport. And respectfully, I know there are some on the council who would suggest that I can't briefly explain on anything. But I will try to be brief in this. This program was established in 2009. The Main Street Iowa Program for the Hilltop Campus Village was, is almost 10 years old. It is a, an effort to revitalize and stimulate reinvestment, redevelopment, and preservation within a confined area that is from Fifth Street up to Lombard and between Ripley and Perry, and then near and around and within the St. Ambrose Program University. Under this agreement, the city and the Main Street Iowa Program in Des Moines and the Hilltop Campus Village, which is comprised of volunteers that serve in four groups, all work together on providing some financial assistance and some technical assistance and some work groups working on their strategic plan. Chiefly, in the last decade, what we have been at least partially responsible for has been the Harrison Lofts Apartments, which were built five years ago. 60-unit project on the 1400 block of Harrison. The funding and financing and construction of an attendant parking lot for that. We've also been supportive recently of Palmer College's PID, Planned Institutional District, which we presume, we believe will stimulate considerable investment. which we presume, we believe will stimulate considerable investment. Those of you who have driven around Harrison and Brady have seen new shops open up and existing businesses open up. There's been a change in the complexion of the area. Whereas before it was often characterized as an interstate connecting the downtown with Eldridge through some high-traffic areas. Now it is smaller shops, we've had conversions from vacant properties, some of which have been vacant for eight years, to viable businesses now. And I know we've surprised many people, including ourselves, but also the folks at Main Street Iowa, because four years ago, we were honored for hitting a landmark of getting fifty million dollars in private sector reinvestment. And that's everything from a redevelopment of parcels that can run into the millions to somebody putting windows on or painting their house. Everything goes into that equation, and the folks at Main Street Iowa and the Iowa Economic Development Authority were frankly surprised when we were able to hit that landmark of fifty million, and they said, well, you'll have to settle back because we don't have anything else until one hundred million, and there's only one other city that's ever made that, and they were registered in nineteen eighty-four. Well, we are at just under eighty-nine million, and it won't be this year, but we fully expect to surprise our people with the help of the city, the city departments, and the volunteers in and around the area. We expect to be able to surprise those people again, so we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, real exciting, just some great partners that have made some incredible investments. You know, the economic impact yearly out of that area is hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, so keep up the good work. Thanks.
Anyone else from the council? I'll just reiterate, Scott, awesome job, obviously, speak out in support of this resolution. The financial cost to the city on this is ten thousand dollars a year. And as you said, we're, we're taking ten thousand dollars a year and leveraging that to eighty-nine million in economic development. That's pretty good leverage, so thank you for all your hard work, the Hilltop's looking good. And seeing no one else, that will conclude community development, I'll send it over to Alderman Kuhl to set the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move that items one, two, and three be moved forward to discussion, items four, six, seven, eight, and nine to consent with the understanding that item number five was tabled.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that concludes community development, back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Kuhl, and just so everybody knows, what happened with discussion and consent means those individual items go to discussion. So next Wednesday, we will discuss them individually, whereas the rest that are on consent just get voted on in totalitarian. So they'll be voted separately, and you'll, you'll see all us do that, whereas the other ones are all together, so please stay engaged. Next area to discuss is, is public safety, and Alderman, Alderwoman Rossin will chair the discussion with Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have a fairly lengthy public safety agenda, so I will try to be succinct. First item on the agenda is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule fourteen of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Intersection Traffic Signals by Adding Division Street at Seventy-Sixth Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two, a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule eight of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Thirty-Minute Parking by Adding Main Street along the east side from Second Street North to the alley. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. For section number three, I'm gonna read these two at a time and then ask for input. First item under three, downtown, this is resolutions closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds and listed dates for outdoor events. Downtown Partnership Bix Street Fest, July twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, nine AM to twelve AM. Closure location, Second Street between Ripley and Brady Streets, Main Street from the alley south of Third Street to the alley north of River Drive, and Harrison Street for the alley south of Third Street to the entrance to the Ground Transportation Center. Next item, Andy Lang Kilkenny's Pub Bix Fest Block Party, July twenty-sixth, five PM to eleven-thirty PM, July twenty-seventh, five PM to eleven-thirty PM, July twenty-eighth, six AM to twelve AM, and July twenty-ninth, twelve AM to four AM. Closure location will be Third Street between Ripley and Harrison, and the parking lane and one travel lane on the west side of Harrison Street north to the alley. For those two items, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on either one of those? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those two items will move on. Quad Cities Visitors Bureau Ragbride twenty-eighteen, July twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, five AM to eight PM. Closure location, River Drive from the west city limit to River Drive to Marquette Street, south on Marquette to Byterbeck Drive, Byterbeck Drive from Marquette Street to Gaines Street. Next item, Corn Belt Running Club, Bix Run Events, Junior Bix, Brady Street Sprints, Quick Bix, and Bix Seven Race, July twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth until the race ends, three PM to ten PM Thursday, one PM Friday until Bix Seven Race concludes on Saturday. Closure location, Thursday, Brady Street between Fourth and Palmer Drive, Fourth Street from River Drive to Leclerc Avenue, Friday and Saturday, Leclerc Street from Fourth Street to Second Street, Iowa Street from Fourth Street to Second Street, Pershing from Fourth to Second Street, Third Street from River Drive to Pershing Avenue, Fourth Street from River Drive to Main, Brady Street from River Drive to Kirkwood Boulevard, Kirkwood Boulevard to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from Twelfth Street to East Street, Middle Road from Jersey Ridge Road to Ridgewood, McClellan Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive, and finally, Third Street from Main to River Drive. Anyone have a comment on either one of those two items? I, I live in the Bix route, so. And now I'm being forced to read all that. Okay, so seeing no one from the public, we have, Rick, are you, wanna comment on this? Okay, go ahead.
Back to the Ragbride one here, surely we're not closing all of River Drive, that's just one lane or somebody?
Yeah.
Sarah Ott, no, we are not closing all of River Drive, just one lane.
That would be fun times. Cause there's so much construction right now, let's just close a major thoroughfare. And surprise people. The final three items, I'll, oh, is there anyone else from council? Okay, seeing and hearing no one else, this item will, these two items will move on. The final three items, Sippy's Restaurant Sixth Annual Gene Price Memorial Car Show, August eleventh, twenty-eighteen, six AM to four PM, closure location, Second Street between Ripley and Scott. Village of East Davenport Association Farm Days in the Village, August twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth, Friday, three PM to seven PM, and Saturday, August twenty-fifth, from six-thirty in the morning to six PM. Closure location, Eleventh Street between Mound and Jersey Ridge, and Christie from Eleventh North to the alley. And the final one under this section, Bo Arts Fund Committee, the Bo Arts Fall Fair, September seventh through the ninth, twenty-eighteen, twelve PM September seventh through seven PM September ninth. Closure location will be the Second Street between Harrison and Main. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either of those three items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. The next section is motion approving various noise requests for events. We have a couple of items, I'll read these together. Andy Lang Kilkenny's, previously mentioned, three hundred West Third Streets, the Bix Fest Block Party, July twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth, six AM to eleven PM, over fifty DBA. And the second one, Downtown Partnership, three-three-one West Third Street, for the Bix Street Fest, July twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, nine o'clock in the morning until twelve AM, over fifty DBA. Anyone from the public have, wanna comment on either one of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, these items will move on. We have a couple of motions for approving beer and liquor license, the first one, I guess we only have one, that's unusual. The Filling Station, five hundred West Third Street, outdoor area, July twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, the Bix Event, License Type B. Anyone have any commentary they'd like to make on that one item? From the public, anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, these, that item will move on. The next section is annual license renewals, and if you haven't been here before, I will not be reading those, so you're welcome. So you can flip through those at your leisure. Just wanna note, on the next page, under Fifth Ward, Los Primos Mexican Grill, we will be voting on this item later in the agenda, and that is just to do some housekeeping with Los Primos, they're currently under a timely filed license for their liquor license, and we need to vote to approve it to keep them in good standing with the state. So that's just some housekeeping, so everyone's up to speed on that. And then finally, let's see, I know we've got, just moving along here, a lot of annuals. So Section C, if I didn't miss anything, let me know. The final item under this section will be the request for nineteen and twenty-year-olds on premises. And we have one item in Third Ward, which is Day Trotter, three-twenty-four Brady Street, License Type for Beer and Wine. And for this one item, does anyone have anything they would like to comment? Anyone from council? All right, seeing and hearing no one, that item will move on, and that concludes public safety, and the last, Alderman Condon to set the agenda.
I make a motion to put all items on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Did I, did I hear all ayes? Okay, anyone opposed, same sign? All right, I thought I heard a nine in there going into Deutschland. All right. Oh, you do Chinese? Okay, we're, we're gonna, we're moving on. Back to you.
Thank you. I'm gonna take one little additional here and ask Alderwoman McGinnis to make an announcement, cause it is a kind of a public safety thing, so.
Thank you very much, and thank you for letting me do this. We neglected to mention earlier in the meeting, the, about the Youth Community Action Summit that's coming up next week. It is Thursday, June fourteenth, as we all know, there have been some, there were two very horrific deaths of youth in May, and we are encouraging the public to attend this summit, along with the police department and, and others from the city. It's, the summit is gonna be Thursday, June fourteenth. You must register to attend, and you can do that by going to wwwcityofdavenportiowa.com. There are, there's an opportunity in the afternoon and an evening, so an option of one of those. There is a one PM to three forty-five session, and then there is a five-thirty to seven-thirty session, so you can opt for one of those. And there will be discussion and then breakout sessions to talk about what we can do going forward. This is certainly not the last that people will be hearing about this, but it, it is an important time in our city, it's an important time in our history to begin to deal with this. And as we move toward urban revitalization and, and dealing with our youth and, and trying to create a positive environment for them, we thought this was very important, and with the mayor absent, I'm sure he would have brought this up tonight, and he isn't here. So I just wanted to remind folks, so again, you must register, go on the city's website, and, or you can contact Sarah Ott, who's the Assistant to the City Administrator, if you have any questions about this. And that is Thursday, June fourteenth, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, thank you. Next area to discuss is public work, so Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion with Alderman Dunn, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Honor. I'm gonna read all these items and ask for public input. The first item is a third consideration ordinance amending Chapter thirteen point three four entitled Stormwater Management by Updating Stormwater Detention and Water Quality Treatment Requirements, Increasing Stream Buffers, Distances, and New Developments, Clarifying Drainage Easements, Language, Adopting, and Unifying Size Criteria, Removing the Use of Orifice Restrictor Plates on Outlet Pipes and Restructuring Subsections for Clarity. Number two is a third consideration ordinance amending Chapter thirteen point three eight entitled Construction Site Erosion and Cement Control by Updating Definitions of Redevelopment and Topsoil and Correlating Application Procedures in Forming the Chapter thirteen point three four Stormwater Management. Number three is a resolution awarding and conditionally approving the contract and bond for the FY twenty-nineteen Contract Sewer Repair Program to Hagerty Earthworks of Moline or Muscatine in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Number four is resolution awarding and conditionally approving the contract and bond for the twenty-nineteen Contract Sewer Repair Program to Hometown Plumbing and Heating Company of Davenport in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Number five is a resolution awarding and conditionally approving the contract and bond for the FY twenty-nineteen Contract Sewer Repair Program to Legacy Corporation of East Moline in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Number six is a resolution approving the contract for Lindsey Slater Park's Restrooms, for Lindsey and Slattery Park Restrooms, water and sanitary sewer connections to Hometown Plumbing and Heating of Davenport in the amount of one-hundred-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the Main Street Landing Parking Phase One Project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bettendorf in Iowa in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-seven dollars. Authorizes the Mayor Frank Klipsch to sign and manage any related agreements. Number eight is a resolution approving a license agreement by and between the city of Davenport and the Hilltop Campus Village, allowing the Hilltop Campus Village to install an eleven-foot by twelve-foot sign on the existing brick wall at the north side of parcel number C zero zero five-five dash one-six, five oh six Brady Street. Number nine is a resolution approving the plan specification and form of contract and the estimated cost for the West Sixth Street and Oak Street Area Sidewalk Program. And the last item, number ten, is a resolution approving the purchase of a used street sweeper from Mid-Iowa Solid Waste Equipment of Johnstown, Iowa in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars. Now, is there anybody in the public that wished to address any of these items? City Council? All have been done, please set the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose, I make a motion recommending placing all items on consent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. So our last discussion area is finance, so Alderwoman Tompkins will lead that with Alderwoman McGinnis helping, Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have a short agenda tonight, so I will get started. Number one is a third consideration, an ordinance amending various sections in Chapter two point eight six entitled Administrative Hearing Procedures. This is in regards to waiving some fees in regards to an appeals process. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number two is a resolution of agreement and support for River Action's application for a state and our federal grant related to the construction of First Bridge, a pedestrian bridge over River Drive to River Heritage Park. And it's my understanding, we have Kathy Wine here from River Action who would like to speak in regards to this item, maybe? Thank you.
Yes, I'm Kathy Wine, Executive Director of River Action, and I live in Davenport, twenty-five-hundred East River Street. We are involved in two fronts, on two fronts right now. One is with this DOT grant, both federal and state. We recently had someone come from the headquarters in Ames, walk the site, walk the sidewalks, talk to us about what's needed for a successful application, and this resolution is one of those items that they brought up. The second front we're working on is the Museum Without Walls, and that's the tour that we're making with the eleven sites that relate to the story of First Bridge, and the most exciting part happened this week, so I thought I'll share that with you. The history, history office of the arsenal has been looking for the First Bridge Pier on the south side of the island. It's under a little bit of water, so they were using sonar images, but they found it. They are going back in now and filming the finding of it, and it'll go on their Facebook page and our Facebook page, but it's really exciting to find that original pier. And that will be signed and lighted from the Rock Island side. We've already done the side on the north side and lit that, so if you're down on the riverfront in Heritage Park, you would see that tonight, it's lit. That, those are just two of those items that we are covering with Museum Without Walls. I hope you'll find that this resolution is within your desire to help with the project and want to support it. Do you have any questions for us at all?
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kathy, this is incredibly exciting, can you, for the public, explain what the First Bridge is and give a little history there?
Sure. Sure. That is the first bridge that crossed the river, the Mississippi River in, as a railroad bridge in eighteen fifty-six. And the original embankment or berm that it landed on in Iowa is at Federal Street. That is now in the possession of River Action. The owner deeded that to us a couple of years ago. And so since we now own it, we have approached designers and historians and all about creating one span of the original bridge exactly as it was. That would be two-hundred-and-fifty-five feet, which perfectly crosses the River Drive and railroad right-ofways there on the other side of River Drive into River Heritage Park. And we feel that this is a wonderful addition to revitalizing the neighborhood north, which is getting more and more housing all the time. It also provides the best and safest way across River Drive and the railroad track to the island, or to the River Heritage Park and Mississippi River Trail and downtown and to the development to the east and into the village and so on. We know that it's needed because we've done five tests of the safety of the crossings that we have on River Drive there, starting at Federal Street and going out either way, and they came back with poor ratings, and so that's another part of our effort to get DOT funding. This is a safety measure as well, so that's.
Kathy, what happened to the First Bridge?
Oh, I'm not doing my, a good job with the history. Thank you. The First Bridge, for a number of days after it was built, was hit by the Effie Afton, and there was controversy on whether or not the current going through the bridge was the cause of that and that the bridge was obstruction to navigation. So the steamboat companies came back with a lawsuit against the railroad that would settle the case whether there should be a bridge at all. And the case was finished in the Supreme Court. One of the things that made it especially interesting was that Abraham Lincoln was the lawyer that represented the railroad, and in the end, it was determined that the railroad had as much right to cross the river as steamboats did go up and down it. Before that final lawsuit was finalized, the bridge was rebuilt. Henry Farnham saw that it was probably going to run, be in his favor, he just went about building that second bridge right on the piers of the first.
And Kathy, you got a very exciting video, historic video. Where can that be watched?
Yes, we do have that, and we've got that on our website, and we're going to be showing the East Meets West documentary, which is almost fifteen minutes long, at the Putnam on June twenty-eighth. And I'm inviting all of you, in fact, we prepared that invitation today in the office, to come to the Putnam and see that. Those that are a part of our alliance too, of community businesses and organizations that have joined the alliance, and there are twenty-eight to date, we're adding more all the time, will be given a special reception prior to the showing of that East Meets West documentary. So.
Right.
You can see it on our website. Just let us know if you need a copy, a DVD of your own to.
Yeah, we'd probably like to put that up on our website.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Kathy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I also wanted to point out and thank staff and Kathy for your time in going and reviewing this contract. And I just thought it was something to share, that this contract is a little unique and that we have a part of that where there is an endowment that includes money to take care of the maintenance for this bridge for about twenty years. So I appreciate staff's time and thoroughly reviewing that and, and taking care of it further down the road to have that vision. So thank you. So any other, oh, I see Alderman McGinnis.
Yes, I'd just like to say thanks to River Action for its many, many years of vision and visioning of our river and what it can be, and it's, it certainly, now it is not what it was when you began, when your organization began. Thank you for paying to underwrite the lighting of the Centennial Bridge every night, which I don't know if people are aware of that, and that you underwrite that every year.
That's right.
That's a great vision, and, and that was a, an addition that really meant a lot to that bridge, so thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Yes, that was thirty years ago, and we still have funding in that endowment for lighting the bridge every night, and that's why we put the endowment in for the maintenance on the bridge.
Thank you. Anyone else from council wish to comment on this item? No, this item will move forward. Thank you. Moving on to number three, is a resolution approving changes to the Building Permit Fee Schedule by Amending the Accessibility Review Fees. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. Number four is a resolution awarding the purchase of seven HP DL three-eight-zero Gen X servers for the IT Department to Genesis Corporation of Redmond, Washington, in the amount of one-hundred-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on, and I will ask Alderman McGinnis to set the agenda, please.
Yes. I move that all items be moved to the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. One other comment that I have is coming to us next week on Tuesday, so June twelfth at five o'clock. We are excited to share that the Adler has a new sign, a new marquee outside, and so it will be a lighting of that new sign, so we invite everybody from the public to be there. Again, that is Tuesday, the twelfth, at five o'clock. Hope to see you there. Thank you. The last piece is, we just have for informational purposes only, are purchases between ten and fifty thousand dollars, and I do not read those to save some time. So thank you so much, and I will pass it back to Alderman Mattson. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Tompkins. So the next item is Other Ordnances Resolution and Motions. We have one, so we need to suspend, so I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules to vote on the resolution. There's a move, there's a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I started in the wrong order. Apologize.
Whatever order you'd like.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been, the rules have been suspended, so I'll entertain a motion. All right, for, to add Los Primos Grill, and anybody from the public at eleven forty-three East Locust?
And to approve it.
And to approve it. Outdoor area license type B. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Okay, roll call.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
All right, very good, that's approved. Now, the next section is, any public with any comments? You have five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that has anything to address with the city council? Seeing none? Okay. Anything else? Good? Any reports to city? No? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.